Call the meeting of May 8, 2012 to order. Roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Rozansky is currently absent.
All right. Clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Diggle?
None.
Councilman Hen.
Yes, I do have one. For the agenda item number three, where we're talking about repealing the solicitation ordinance, I guess my question is, I understand that there's been a recent ruling. Are there other laws out there, model laws, that we can still look at? And is there any intent here to see if there is a substitute ordinance that might be more amenable under the latest interpretations? That we could still have some sort of, you know, representation of that in our ordinance?
Currently, all the laws that are on the books are pretty much modeled after the same, the same ordinance, primarily because it's been previously upheld by the courts as being a valid ordinance. We're exploring whether there are other ordinances that might be available to basically achieve the same intent as this ordinance. The court did, in its ruling, state that if you had enough factual support, that an ordinance may be justified. So if we saw a real problem occurring in a particular area in the city, we could develop the evidence to support an ordinance that addressed concerns of particular locations, for sure.
Are these, is this activity, was the import of the ruling such that this activity is not even permissible by the city? In other words, the city can't require permits for it to occur?
That's a good thought, though. We'll take a look into that. They didn't address issues as far as permitting, so that's a good thought. Maybe we'll take a look into that.
Yeah, because I see, I see at least public safety value in ordinances like this, and I'd hate to just give up on the possibility of having something that could have some effect on it.
Okay.
And I think it's important, if we can, for the prophylactic value of having an ordinance in place that would, you know, help prevent this from becoming a problem in the first instance.
I really like that idea. We'll take a look into that, as well as other ideas, and we'll bring something back if we find something that would be acceptable to the courts.
Okay.
Councilman Selig?
I have none.
Councilman Hill?
I have none.
Mayor Protam Curry?
I have none.
I have two. County and the dredging on item number five, which would be Chris Miller.
Yes.
Item number five. This is the agreement with Anchor about the Linda Isle Harbor Island Channel dredging.
Yes.
How far are we in our discussions with the county in terms of their reimbursing us, and how confident are we that that will take place?
Very confident. I spoke to the purchasing crew last week, and they said that Mark Denny, OC Parks Director, supports it, as well as the supervisor, Morlock, does. And so we are working on the agreement, and then eventually we'll talk to the contractor in the next couple of weeks, get some firm prices. Well, that won't, eventually get some firm prices so that we can, in turn, go back to the county with a formal agreement.
Okay, thank you. And then on number seven, which was the planning commission, I noticed that a couple things have been continued because of, was it faulty notice or something?
Thank you.
What happened?
Please determine that our new cable notice lacks the required information.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, we will begin with the update on Lower Bay dredging.
My name is Chris Miller, Harbor Resources Manager, and I'm here today to give the City Council an update on the dredging projects that are going on in the harbor and what we had planned. In light of our council items this evening, I thought it'd be an appropriate time to go over where we're at with our dredging. So RE State is our contractor, and they mobilized last week and also began dredging last week. They mobilized half their equipment last week, and the other half is actually, as of today, mobilized. They are going to have two dredge units, which are two barges with two clamshell buckets, which are cranes, and they drop down and grab up the sediment and put it in dump scows. The larger dredge has a 14-yard cubic bucket, the smaller has an eight-yard cubic bucket. Three disposal scows, one large 2,000 cubic yard and two 1,000 yards. These are the same scows that we use for the Rhine Channel project, and we'll have three tugs that go along with that. So quite, quite a lot of equipment here in our harbor than we're used to seeing. Chris, question for you. Are these contracted to the federal government or to the city? Good, good point. This is a federal contract through the Army Corps of Engineers, so they are contracted through the Corps. And who project manages them? The project manager is a Corps of Engineer. Okay. But it's actually a joint project between the city and the Corps of Engineers. The Corps turns to the city for guidance on most every decision that is made, so it's a very collaborative process. Very good. As we all know, we're working with our Port of Long Beach disposal window, and, which closes on June 30. The amendment to our agreement with the Port of Long Beach was just executed very recently, and every conceivable effort is going to be made to get this material up to the Port of Long Beach. Right now, as of this moment, RE State is authorized to work from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. And just this morning and officially tomorrow in our construction meeting, they're going to request a 24-hour schedule during certain weeks when there are favorable tides. The reason why is because they, they really want to maximize the sediment inside the bar, inside the scows, so they can actually float it out of our harbor. Rather than loading it 75%, they'd like to load it 80, 90, 100%, which, you know, has a greater draft if it's, you know, the heavier it is. And so they're, they're kind of working out their kinks right now with their current system and figuring out what they can and can't do. But with this deadline, their current schedule puts them through the first week in July, which is not acceptable. So they are, they have come to us, and tomorrow we'll be talking to them about their schedule. But I want to get a read from the council and see how they felt about the 24-hour schedule.
From my perspective, I think we should authorize you to have whatever authority you need to let these people work a 24-hour schedule. This is a one-time opportunity. I recognize there's noise and light and other issues associated with this work. But the work does move around the harbor, and it's unlikely that any particular area of the harbor would be affected for a long period of time, and we just really have no choice here. We've got to get this work done, and I think we need to set the expectation for our residents that it's going to be a 24-hour operation probably through the end of June. And then if it turns out that it doesn't need to be that, so much the better. But I don't see how we can possibly take a chance on this. And I guess I thought there was one other issue, too. Isn't Marina Del Rey busily filling up the hole in Port of Long Beach? And is there some risk that this window of opportunity would actually be shorter than June 30?
There's always that risk, but we've been, and, and I'd like, I'd like to not worry about that, but on the same token, I have to, we've been assured that there is space for our material from the lower Newport Bay. But I was at the Port of Long Beach this morning, and they are filling up rapidly. And we're down to the wire of how much space is available. Yes, there's space for the city of Newport Beach, but it is filling up, and I've got a few slides to show exactly what they're doing and pictures. So there's always that concern. I'd rather not push the boundary.
Councilwoman Diggle?
The number-one complaint with the Back Bay dredging, Upper Bay, was the noise, you know, the clanking at night. And I'm wondering with this 24-hour schedule, is it 7:24 or is it three days at 24? Because one of the complaints, when we did this in the Back Bay, was, well, why don't they work five days a week, you know, eight hours a day or 10 hours a day versus, you know, a compressed schedule of 24 hours but less days? I mean, what's really the, sort of the big picture here with that schedule?
The driver is, are the tides. So, and the request that I saw today, and we're going to go in detail tomorrow, is, is tide-based. So as you get that favorable tide cycle, which, as we all know, shifts throughout the day, there are certain weeks between now and June 30 where that tide cycle is favorable in the evening hours, or very late hours. But then there are some times when they won't need to dredge at night, according to their schedule that they have now, and they'll be able to dredge, maximize the daylight hours. So what I saw today was not a carte blanche, 24-hour, seven days a week schedule, but I'll call it a targeted schedule. And granted, it was probably two-thirds of the days that are left between now and June 30, but it wasn't 100%.
What is the limiting factor that they can't do those other third days, that it's inefficient to try to dredge when the tides are that way? It's not profitable? I mean, what is the reason?
It's, it's not, from what they tell me, it's not feasible to float the, the fully-loaded scows out of the harbor. So they can, they can work a full, full shift and take advantage of that tide so they can fill it up to its greatest extent and then float it out. During the evening hours when there is, when they're not, on those few days when they're not working, it doesn't make any sense because they wouldn't be able to get it out. They're also looking for a four scow up and down the coast. They haven't had any luck over the past few weeks, but they are actively looking. Right now, we'll have three scows in use. As of today, they're going to get, the two new ones are going to get certified tomorrow, and then they'll be in full production mode.
Will we be able to have a pretty good idea of where they will be on this 24-hour schedule in the bay?
Yes.
Because I think one thing, I'm, I agree with Mike, that I think we have to get our teeth and do this, but if we could let people know, hey, you know, this, these three or four nights, it's going to be 24 hours, and if you want to take your drift to Napa, that might be a good time. It might be helpful to people if we could give them some specific information on the 24 hours, make it a little more finite than just three weeks or a month, if we can give some areas of where we think. If we can do it, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. I'll try and nail that down with them tomorrow, and then I'll, I'll use my, my email updates as the mode of communicating what, what the schedule is.
Yeah, there you go.
So this is a picture that I'm quite proud of. This took nearly 10 years to come to this day, and this is the first scoop. And it's, I think, I think the city of Newport Beach should be proud because this, this is finally happening. And so I would like to thank the council for helping make this happen as well. This is just some more pictures of the machinery. This is the large, the large dredge right here. There's a smaller one, which I haven't seen, arrived yesterday afternoon. This is one of the tugboats, and this is just a zoom up of, of our sign that says it's a Lower Bay dredging project. Colonel Toy visited us, visited us last week, along with Brian Moore, who is the top civilian employee at the Corps of Engineers. And he, he and the Colonel are responsible for all the projects in our area. And so thank you to Chandler Bell and Hornblower for driving us out in their pontoon boat to take a look at it. We really appreciate that. And Harbor Commissioner Rod Heim was with us as well. I wanted to update the council on some of my outreach efforts that I've been doing, and I'm certainly open for more suggestions. In December, I sent a letter to the waterfront homes. I've sent a few, a couple letters to the affected mooring permatees, because we are going to be dredging underneath the mooring fields. Put out door hangers on April 16 to virtually all of the affected harbor waterfront homes, even more so than are going to be affected. I also do regular email updates, as I believe all the council knows, since they're on my list, as well as anybody else who'd like to be on my list.
How many are on your list, Chris?
I've got just shy of 250 names on my list. So I'd like to raise that number even more. So if anybody would like to be on my list, please email me with your email address, and I'll gladly provide you those. It's a tool that we use during the Rhine Channel project, and it seemed to work well. Just bullet points of what's happening and what the schedule is and where we're going to be, where we've been. And I also have a map that I update that shows exactly that, where we'll be and where we've been, what areas are completed. So I'd like to show the council what the current dredge plan is. This is the plan that is currently awarded. This is fully funded. The red and green areas, red denotes the material that is Port of Long Beach-bound, and the green is the material that is to be disposed at sea at what we call LA 3, which is four and a half miles off of Newport's coast. Right now, we are currently working in this area right here, and we've taken about four or five scows up to the Port of Long Beach, hovering in the 8,000 cubic yards so far. The next portion, once the second barge that just arrived yesterday gets up and running, they're going to start cutting in here, in this small section right here, so they can actually have access to this Port of Long Beach material here. One of the reasons in our discussion a few minutes ago about the tides was they can't even get back to this red area without cutting an access channel through here. So we have to cut through this green material, take it out to LA 3 as soon as we can, quickly, so we can start working on this very large area right here, which extends pretty much up to a little bit past Lido While Yacht Club. We have the same issue right here. This area, this is the Port of Long Beach material here. It's very small, it only represents a few days' worth of work, but in order to get there, we'll have to cut a path in, as well as relocate all of these moorings right here that are in its path. We've also had to relocate some moorings right here. I want to thank Newport Harbor Yacht Club, Gary Hill, and John Fuller for orchestrating that. There's five or six or seven boats we had to move, and about five or six boats in this F-moring field right here. We're finding homes for those moorings elsewhere in the harbor. People are being resourceful and asking their friends if they can put their boat there, and it's really an orchestrated event. Eventually, when we dredge this whole area, we'll have to clear this whole Newport Harbor Yacht Club field. And then in the next slide, I'm going to show you how we're actually trying to dredge this area right here, which means all those moorings will have to be relocated. So it's quite a challenge for us to keep up with that and to plan.
Chris, if we don't get all of the red by the time we need to, say we just run into complications because it takes longer to, to get into those things, will we leave those areas as the plan, or will we just go ahead and do the expensive, we'll continue to dredge those and land dispose of them, or what?
Right now, we don't have, right now, we don't have any contingency plans for, for land, land-based disposal. That, that presents a whole nother laundry list of complications to the project. Where you, how you transport from the, from the bay, you have to dry it out somewhere, load it up, and we just, we haven't worked that far. We're, we're putting all our eggs in this basket.
Okay. Well, let's, let's hope, then. Councilman Hen?
Yeah, one of the benefits of having to uproot these mooring fields, though, is when you put them back, you'll put them back in accordance with the work the Harbor Commission did to realign the mooring fields. Is that correct? And so we'll get another side benefit there.
Very much so. And that long project that the mooring master plan subcommittee of the Harbor Commission worked on for five or six years was, will be put to very good, good work. And I just wanted to point out, it's kind of hard to see. We have a little sliver, which is a few days' worth of work here by the Coast Guard, Harbor Patrol, Bow Boy Yacht Club. Just hard to see on the map. On this next slide, this shows the project that we, as a harbor community, would like to see. Starting off, of course, with the Rhine Channel, which we've already done, but this would be the ultimate project, not, not the project that would, that we envisioned five or six years ago dredging 1.4 million cubic yards, but this would net us around five, 550,000 cubic yards of material. And the colors I've broken up here mean green is currently awarded, so all the green that you see there is in our current contract, and it looks like orange or light brown. The other color are areas that we are going to sit down with the contractor in the next few weeks and ask them for proposals on what it would take, what they would charge to dredge those areas. I would hope they'd be eager to do the work, and we're hoping that. I, I don't know what those prices will be, but I have some estimates, which I'll go through in the next few slides. But this is all the work that we'd like the contractor to work on, except, well, I shouldn't say except, but this is its own, its own, its own separate project, and I'm going to be talking about that a little later on. But these areas represent all the high spots in the harbor. So this is really the ideal project that, that the harbor community would like to have. Now, if you, if you look at this, this mirrors almost exactly what the previous slide showed us. I'm sorry about the colors and not to confuse you, but in this slide, the red means that it's high, not that it's hot, but that it's high, high spot, shoaling. So all these areas right here are exactly where, and I'm going to go back to the previous slide, where we are intending to dredge. So this has been, and bathymetry means how deep your, your harbor is. So I thought I'd show you this, and it just shows you exactly why it is we can't get out of the harbor at certain tides, because if the scow is fully loaded, we can't float ourselves out.
If it's brown on the north side of Lido, I guess that is.
Right here?
That means it's shallower than the other side of the channel, right?
Than here?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's nothing to say with dredging?
Yes.
Why is that?
Okay, so right now, we're dredging right here. We have, we have what we call the main navigational channel. I'm just going to draw this line. It goes all the way from here, and you can see right there, see how it's kind of a defined channel? That channel is supposed to be at minus 20 feet, because back in the, back in the old days, that's when the big cutters would come, and they would come anchor here, and they needed the depth. But it's just that narrow channel right there. In this part, right here, the depth is only supposed to be, I believe it's minus 10 feet, so it's a big difference. If you have a deep keel boat, you sail right along here, you hug Coast Highway. If it's shallow, if it's a more today's boat, a little shallower, then you would stay on the other side, or, or in the deeper, of course. What we also did is, we had all these plans, and we worked on them for a long time, for a couple of years, trying to figure out which areas we would dredge, based on all the factors that I've gone over. And we still had some people come up to us and say, well, Chris, I'm still hitting some high spots here. I, I see what your charts say, but can you go back and figure out how we can take care of some of these high spots that we're experiencing? So we did just that. Back in, a while back, we, we resurveyed, we did some targeted surveys and really dissected it, and we found that, we found that our, our current dredge plan goes to about right here, and sure enough, there's a couple of high spots a little bit further. So we're going to get those high spots. In the next slide, oh, pardon me, this is, just for reference, this is the Coast Guard Station and Bow Boy Yacht Club in Little Island, of course. We also did some, did some more surveys. This is the Coast Guard Station again, and there's a high spot right here that I believe this is where people are hanging up on. We have a picture of that from some of our sailors who get hung up on that at certain tides during the beer can races. Also, we've got a few, this red means it's shoaling, and we've got some, a few high spots in this area which we've had complaints on. So in other words, what our survey records from last summer, 2011, showed us didn't exactly show us the complete truth, because people were complaining to me, saying, we're, we're getting hung up in certain areas. Chris, can you please look at it? So we did just that, and I wanted to show the council what our efforts have been. So now I'll spend a little bit of time on the Port of Long Beach. As we all know, I briefed the council on, on what that project is all about, but this is basically where our material is going, right here in this channel. This white line right here represents the extent of the entire project, and eventually all this water will be land. And then the big ships, which used to dock right here, will berth right here, and then all this will be used for container storage. In other words, their land is much more valuable as container storage than it is for ships to berth and use. This is an idea of the, this back, so this picture right here represents right there, and you can see, this is one, this is and you can see, this is one, this is another party. Manson is working on this, and what they're doing is they're literally pushing in dirt into the end of this channel and inching their way forward. And they've covered quite a bit of ground. That's one contractor who's working to fill in this channel. I think the point of why I'm putting this up here is because there are many competing factors from various entities who are also contributing to filling it up. And this is them just pushing, this was actually this morning. Now, here's another use of, the channel is right here, and you see all these trucks lining up here. They're from the Colorado Lagoon, which is in Long Beach, just a few miles away, and what they're doing is they're end dumping into this chute, which is putting it into this barge right here, and this tug is pushing this barge out and dumping it into the harbor, into the channel. At the same time, we have a few different projects coming in by barge, like we are, and disposing into the channel. So we have this choreographed dance that all the tugboat captains are playing to try and go in their respective area where they've been assigned to drop the material. I think it's interesting. So I'm going to now give a summary of, and list some numbers here, and I'll go one by one, so we can get an idea of where we're at. The total LA 3 material with the option areas of that bigger map that I showed you is approximately, it's estimated, about 426,000 cubic yards, which equals $5.6 million. The total Port of Long Beach material, which we know exactly what that is, it's about 105, and there's always a margin of 10% in there, that equals about $1.4 million. So the total cubic yards for the project in the perfect scenario is about 532,000 cubic yards, which equates to $7 million. Does not include mobilization. Another way to look at this, which is interesting, I think, is divide that same number into city and county material. So we've got the city estimated, of course, I'm going to keep emphasizing the estimated because it still is, 456,000 cubic yards versus the county's 75,000 cubic yards. And here's the price difference right here. Notice how these numbers are the exact same as here, it's just, I'm just throwing out different ways of looking at it, dividing it between Port of Long Beach and LA 3 and then city-county. As far as fundings go, the original federal project was about $2.3 million. That's what the federal government had. And then, as you recall, back in February, they had a gift, somehow they found $2 million, and there was a lot of work that went into that, but it was a great surprise, and so that's an extra $2 million. And then, of course, the city council contributed $2.5 million to equal a total project funding right now of $6.8 million. Now comes into the real numbers. If the current contract award, the current contract award is $6.3 million. Now, that includes mobilization and everything. The additional areas, remember on the map, the additional areas that we're hoping to dredge, estimated by me, based on quantities and based on what the contractor is currently charging us, hoping that he charges us the same price, maybe he will, maybe he won't, but this is a good enough number to use, represents about $2.3 million for the grand total, including mobilization of an $8.7 million project. So now, how does that relate to what we have? Well, our current available funds are $6.8 million. That's this number right here, put right there. The difference is $1.9 million. But we forgot about the county. The county, estimated, is going to contribute about $975 million, assuming my estimates are correct. So that remains, that leaves us with a remaining gap to overcome, not including the Linda Isle and Harbor Island channels, I'm just focusing on the main federal channels, of about a million-dollar delta on this current project.
Chris, if we could find the money, how much do we save by not having the whole thing shut down and having to mobilize again to do the other parts?
We save, with this contractor, the, you can tell, the difference is, the difference between 8.77 and $7 million, that's $1.7 million for mobilization.
For mobilization, so it would be, if we did it later, it would cost approximately twice as much?
Well, we definitely have to pay a mobilization charge again. The cubic yard rate is probably in the same ballpark, but it's that MOB cost, and it's just the orchestration of it and going through hiring and all that effort.
Plus the potential for new permitting or additional permitting, depending on when it might get done.
That is exactly correct. Does anybody have any more questions about this slide? There's a lot of information on here, but I tried to simplify it as best as I can. Moving on, now I'm going to discuss the Linda Isle Harbor Island project, and this is a joint project, which would be a city and county project. This project involves this channel right here, in between Linda Isle and Harbor Island, and then the backside of Linda Isle. From a square footage or an acreage perspective, the county owns, of this total area, the county is responsible for, right on the nose, 66% of the area, while the city, this represents 33%, so it's a two-thirds, one-third split. It makes it really easy to calculate for the numbers when we split costs.
Chris, how did that jurisdictional responsibility get determined?
These are county tidlins, so from about, I'm just going to ballpark it, from about right here to there, all this is county tidlins, with the exception of this channel right here, which we can't see, that's owned by the Irvine Company. This inner lagoon is Linda Isle. The county tidlins bleeds into here, and then back here, through some research that Councilmember Selich and I did a couple of years ago, discovered that this area is city responsibility, city tidlins. So a few facts about that project. I just talked about the area. We'd like to dredge it to about minus eight feet plus two feet of overdredge, and these are estimated quantities. I think they still have to be refined a little bit, but basically, we're looking at, if you add these to 55, just shy of 60,000 cubic yards. And the city's portion of that, if you just take a third for rough numbers, we'd be responsible for 15,000, 20,000 cubic yards. Newfields has completed their sediment characterization of this area just recently, and that took about, well, all in all, just under a year to do, and that was jointly paid for by the city and county, two-thirds, one-third split. And Anchor QEA is assisting with permitting these channels ASAP, and the county will reimburse us once we develop this master agreement that will wrap this into the Lower Bay Agreement. What our thought is, is our goal is to permit those channels as soon as possible, and the reason why we're going through this is because we didn't anticipate that the Corps would give us that extra $2 million, which now opened up our eyes a little bit and said, "Wait, maybe we can actually do a little bit more." And so what we'd like to do is, we'd like to be ready to dredge, if at all possible, during this current Lower Bay project, if there's funding, if there's equipment, and if the stars align. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I think it's prudent to try. If that doesn't work, then we will be ready to dredge in two years, when the Balboa Marina, which is an Irvine Company/City of Newport Beach joint project, hopefully, if that gets approved, which we're working on, as the council knows, we can take advantage of that dredger and take care of this area. So that's kind of our backup plan. But I thought it was, I thought it'd be prudent, as I said, to try and get it permitted ASAP now, so that if we can make it happen with this current effort, all the better. Of course, this would need to be funded, we haven't talked about that. The funding wouldn't be near the type of numbers that we're seeing for the Lower Bay project, so if you figure 15,000 or 20,000 cubic yards times 15 or 20 dollars, it's a large sum of money, but it certainly isn't in the million-dollar range by any stretch. The one last caveat with this project is that, I was so frustrated, because this blue box represents, we had, our mercury count was a tad high just in this blue box, this is the backside of Linda Isle. We can dredge, everything else can go to LA 3, except for that blue box, and it's shy of 5,000 cubic yards, it's a drop in the bucket, but it makes our life a lot more complicated, which is another reason why, if the stars align, we can maybe tack it on to this Lower Bay project, but I got to say, it's probably unrealistic we'll be able to do that before June 30th, and I really don't even think the contractors' equipment could even fit back there. But our goal is, we're pushing ahead to try and see if we can, and just trying, so we can have options. That's really the whole thing, is to have, give ourselves options. We also have eelgrass to contend with, and fortunately for the city, we have some eelgrass, whereas the county has a lot of eelgrass in the county section, which is right here. So our plan is to mitigate for that using the Corps of Engineers Mitigation Bank, which they are establishing for the Lower Bay project. So they're doing the homework for us, we're just going to kind of tack on to their mitigation bank. This is all kind of in theory, assuming we can dredge, but we're trying to map this out in our heads right now. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Well, I don't have a question. I just, again, wanted to express my thanks to you and other members of staff, Dave Kiff and others, that have been so involved in this. This is another big win for the lower harbor, and we need to just make darn sure that this thing gets done, and in my view, gets done to the maximum. This is a, really, it is a one-time opportunity that we really need to take advantage of. And I realize it's a little premature yet, you still have negotiations to do on the optional work and so forth, but, you know, we're going to want to have another look just as soon as you're ready, to make sure we can identify what the funding requirements were. Thanks, Chris.
Councilman DeGle?
The question, we were talking about the bathymetry, which is the depth, but it's also volumetric, it's the overall volumes that are involved. And with the sea level rising, and I just want to confirm that that's, the city believes that's happening, how does that affect future projects potentially? Because if the water's rising, then you're still going to achieve the same depth.
I guess we wouldn't have to dredge that much in 50 years.
Right, so one benefit of seawall, sea rising is not as much dredging?
Probably take a foot or two off of our dredge footprint in 50 years.
Okay. And is, do we have the data that supports that, though, that the sea levels are rising coming into the harbor?
Well, I know my counterparts in public works are working on that, and I'm helping out too, but yes, we have reports, and that's a discussion that the Tidlins Management Committee is working on regarding bulkheads around Balboa Islands, and, yes.
Okay, because there's also science out there being developed that sometimes land, the land is also falling, so it's something to think about.
Any other council comments?
I'm going to go on.
On that backside of Linda Isle, that bad material, it's going to miss the Port of Long Beach window, so where are we going to take that again?
It's, I'm unsure at this point. It's only 5,000 or even less thousand cubic yards. If we can squeeze into the port at a later date with just a small quantity, maybe, to go to a landfill, if that were an option, that we could somehow figure out how to do, and dry it on a barge and then take it to somewhere else, 5,000 isn't a lot. Yes, it'd be expensive, but even if with that, it wouldn't be near the magnitude of the cost for, like, the whole bay. So I've heard numbers of $100 a cubic yard, and yes, that's a lot of money, but it's less than the effort that we're spending right now.
I wonder if we could use lower castaways, since we're not doing anything with the property, at some point, to dry stuff if we needed to?
That's certainly a possibility.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
Well, I just want to say that I think this is one of the most important projects that the city has, because the city really has no greater economic asset than its harbor, and it really defines the community, defines the city, and I think this is an opportunity for us to save some money by doing as much as we possibly can while we have the dredge and the scow in the harbor to save the mobilization costs, and I'm confident we can figure out how to pay for it.
Anyone else? Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this issue? All right, seeing no one, we will move on to our budget overview.
Thank you, Mayor Gardner and council members. Tonight begins the first of three presentations on the city budget. The Finance Director, Tracy McCrane, will provide you the trends and projections for key revenue, sales tax, property tax, and transit occupancy tax, which in total are still moderately growing. At the next two scheduled budget meetings, we will discuss departmental budgets, review against CIP priorities, and entertain suggested changes by the city manager, and of course, you, the council. But tonight, Ms. McCrane will also show you how we expect to end this year's 2012 general fund budget with some savings, and what programs city manager Dave Kiff proposes to fund in 2013. Ms. McCrane will also walk you through our proposed 2013 general fund budgeted expenditures, which remain essentially flat, even though inflation on goods and other built-in costs increases continue to reduce real dollars available. This means that our department directors continue to find efficiencies and are setting conservative spending priorities. I'd like to take a moment and highlight three foundational areas of change the city manager references in his budget letter. These are the areas of technology, workforce management, and facilities. Briefly, we are catching up on technology and investing in key software that will allow better customer service, more online access, and increased management reporting and oversight. Key technology projects include an updated finance and human resources system, otherwise known as an ERP, computer-aided dispatch and records management system, something our police chief has long sought for, and an enhanced permitting and planning software for our community development and public works customers. In addition, to continue our efforts to reshape the city workforce, we have several initiatives underway that are key to meeting our goals. We're developing a modernized personnel classification and compensation system. It will be better for our employees, and certainly better for the management of our city, and an updated online employee evaluation and management system. Investing in our facilities and public amenities is a core value of the city, and this budget continues to focus on investments in new facilities, including civic center, Marina Park, Sunset Park, Sunset Ridge Park, and others, and the maintenance of existing facilities. To avoid the deferred maintenance problems rampant in California cities, we are developing as part of this year's budget a citywide systematic approach to facility maintenance and asset management. Now, before I move to Tracy's presentation, I'd like to take a moment and acknowledge what we've accomplished this last year. The council has been visionary and a leader in establishing clear fiscal policies for managing and protecting the city's financial resources. Few cities have such clear fiscal policies as the City of Newport Beach. The result of your council's focused attention to fiscal matters can be seen in our increased participation from employees towards funding their own pensions. You will see a chart in the presentation tonight that shows the growth of employee pension contributions as a percentage of total pension costs. We've also implemented a lower-cost pension plan called the Second Tier for new employees who will reduce, this will reduce our long-term pension liabilities. And council has set a goal that we will become a smarter, smaller, and more efficient city. This budget brings our employee count, full-time equivalent employee count, down to 755 employees, its lowest since 2001, a staff reduction of 78 since 2010. So with those comments, I'd like to, at this time, turn the detailed presentation over to Tracy McCrane.
Thank you, Dana. Good afternoon, mayor and council. I just wanted to let you know, we're going to be over the presentation that I did update after getting comments from Finance Committee yesterday, so you have all been provided with a revised presentation that I'll be going through today, and there are copies in the back for the public. We're going to cover our budget principles. We're going to cover our budget principles. As Dana said, the fiscal year 2012 year-end close, we are closing with a surplus, and I'll show you some of the details for that. We're really gonna focus on 2013, the general fund revenue and expenditure projections. The general fund's the main operating fund for the city, it makes up almost three-quarters of our total budget, and we thought we would start here, this being our first of three meetings. What are our key initiatives in 13, and then what critical decision points are left, because there is still work left to do. Our budget principles here haven't changed in the last couple of years, the most important being that we will adhere to council's 2010 fiscal sustainability plan. This is a fiscal sustainability plan unique to the city of Newport Beach. I don't see it anywhere else in our comparable cities, or in cities that I've worked at before. And these are the core pieces of the plan that apply directly to the budget process. So on to our 12 projected savings. In the city manager's quarterly business report, we go in detail about the revenues and expenditures, and what makes up the specific savings here listed down here, 4.4 million. This is savings from current-year operations. This chart does not include fund balance or rebudgets of CIPs from previous years. And what we're ending up with is 4.4, that's made up of 1.4 million in revenue surplus, primarily in the sales tax and TOT areas, and I can go into more detail with that, but it will be prepared for you at the end of the week. And the general fund departments are coming across the board with salary and benefit savings totaling about $3 million for 2012. This was not structural savings in this year, but it was the result of many vacancies throughout the city, primarily in the public safety areas. So the city manager has recommended and is asking for council consideration that this surplus for 2012 be set aside for our key initiatives of IT strategic plan, improving our CIP budget, increasing that to previous levels, as well as building up our reserves for our facilities. Something else I wanted to note, these 2012 levels included an $8 million reduction, structural reductions in the operating budgets. That $8 million then was able to be realigned by this council to important projects like the Thailand's dredging project that Chris just talked about. So for 13, these are the general fund revenues, this is current-year operating revenues, 155.8 million. As is usual, tax revenue of property taxes and others make up 78% of the total general fund revenue budget. There's another important item that we wanna bring up, with the closure of the ABEL JPA and the recent sale of the helicopters, we are budgeting a one-time revenue of 2.5 million to come in as the city's share for the dissolution of that helicopter program. So this is our starting point. So on to this chart, this is our 155.8 million, current-year expectations. Again, it does, we're not looking at the transfers for the total operating expenditure budget. But we went back and we looked, 2010 is the first year that we really started noticing the significant impacts of the recession. That was the year that we began E-RIP. We were expecting an $8 million revenue shortfall, it ended up being only 5 million. But as you can see, we've slowly and moderately been growing since then. Something important to notice is this proposed budget of 155.8, if you remove the one-time revenue from ABEL, it actually in total is only increasing a half a percent from the 12 projected. And what we're finding is that the property tax, while still positive, we've had positive AV growth every year through the recession, it is stabilizing. The assessor has warned cities, especially beach cities, that he's still seeing reassessments, that sales prices on average are down about 5 to 6% in the beach communities. So we've stuck with a very conservative property tax estimate. Total property taxes is only estimated to grow at half a percent between what we project for this year and next year. Sales and TOT tax continue to be strong. We're recognizing double-digit increases in TOT this year. But we have been in contact with the major hotels in the city, and working with our neighboring cities, and they're expecting to really, you know, flatten out. Still a positive 5% growth, which is strong, but with Pelican Hill opening just before this fiscal year, they've really kind of ramped up and have now confirmed that they feel that they're on a more steady path, that they're, you know, they're where they're going to be. So we've built 5% increases to both sales tax and TOT as presented here. The, all other revenue category is trending about, again, a half a percent hike. So now that we know where our starting point is for general fund, oh, uh-oh. There's something wrong with this slide. The next page is the expenditures by function. Yeah, it's skipping. Speaking of our technology problems, we'll just see. On the next slide for council, so not, what's that? It's skipping three or four slides. When we get to the 2013 expenditures by function, we are projecting 154.1 million in total general fund expenditures. This is well below the 155.8 in operating revenues. Again, the way this is broken down is half is for public safety, 9% for general government, 19 public works, 11 community services, and then CIP new funding at 2%. Again, this schedule does not include any transfers to the facilities financing plan or any rebudgets of CIP from years before. Okay, let's see if they're gonna get this. OPEB is our retiree health insurance, so that's the retiree insurance for, the medical insurance for our retirees. And that is a annual pay-as-you-go basis. Okay, well, going on from the next slide in your packet, we did, again, a four-year look at our general fund expenditures. Oh, here we go. And going back again, going back again, we went back to 2010 to look, that was the year that we really started cutting our operating departments, doing the structural changes that we've moved forward. This 2012 year shows the 3 million in operational savings. And then what the city manager requested of all department heads was that they could not request any increases to their operating budgets for 2013. He requested we all remain flat unless we could identify new revenue, which was the case for some recreation and senior services programs. The popularity of those programs is causing a lot more requests than they could offer, or if we could cut back in another area and then swap it for the new priority. This would allow any extra revenues that we expect to be allocated, again, for those key initiatives of IT, CIP, and building our facilities financing reserves. And again, this would show, for 2013, we're increasing our new CIP funding by 1.6 million, and we're increasing the transfer to the facilities financing plan by 3.5 million over 2012, utilizing those surpluses for those core principles. Great, it's in order. Debt service expenditures, we just wanted to show the council. Once you take the BAB subsidy that the city receives from the federal government out, our debt service is roughly 9.5 million. Something important to note, this is actually a million lower than last year. We paid off the Baboa parking lot loan, and we prepaid the Baboa Marina loans for economic savings to the city. So that caused our debt service to be down compared to last year. Pension costs, always a priority with this council, but what I think this slide nicely shows, that starting in 2008 with the miscellaneous groups, it was council's desire to start doing cost-sharing of the pension costs. The ultimate goal, getting to where miscellaneous picks up the 8%, and public safety picks up the 9%. So this chart shows, the blue, the blue part of the bar is the increased employee cost, which results in savings to the city. And as you could see, the city's payment has gone down, but with earnings assumption changes that were recently approved by CalPERS, you see our, our payment goes down, and then it goes up again because of those earnings assumption changes. When CalPERS decided to go from a 7.3 quarters earnings rate to 7.5, that impacts our future payments. And the total impact in one year will be about a $1.7 million increase for the city, and the employer is responsible for that entire payment.
And what did CalPERS actually earn last year?
Do you remember, Dan? It was, it was low last year, it was double digits the year before.
It was like less than 1%.
Yeah, last year it was less than 1%, the year before it was like 15 or something like that.
Okay, so when they don't meet those targets, that creates more of an unfundability.
The employer picks it up, because the employee rate is based on a flat 8 and 9%, depending on their bargaining unit.
Okay.
That's right. So as we update these for new actuarial valuations that we get in October each year, the earnings, gains would make the green bar go down, losses make it go up. And again, changes in earnings assumptions, I updated the Finance Committee yesterday. The chief actuary for CalPERS, in response to some new accounting standards that are gonna be released this summer, is thinking of readjusting his assumptions again, which won't have a significant impact on us until about 15 years out, but then it will significantly increase our pension costs again if those get approved. But what's important is, we've gone from zero employee share to almost 7 million by 2015, once those goals are met. IT, we've been talking a lot about our IT technology fund. The budget as proposed to you not only increases the operational rates by $1 million for the IT technology fund, but it allocates 3 million of surplus from '12 to '13 to start building that infrastructure and funding the ERP. There's also $700,000 identified in a seized assets fund that's restricted solely for public safety, and the city manager has dedicated that for the future ERP, is related to public safety only. Staffing levels, as Dana mentioned, we continue to reduce. The budget as proposed is eight full-time positions less than last year. This is a total change from our high in 2010 of 78 positions. In 2010, we began the year with 833 full-time. So we remain committed to becoming a leaner organization, but while at the same time investing to become smarter with the IT. This is a better chart that kind of shows the significance of the drop. This is the high year of 2010, and this is where we stand as proposed for 2013. And Dana mentioned before, the last time we were at these levels was 2001, which staff reminded me was before we annexed Newport Coast. So we're, we're back to those, those levels from over a decade ago. Yeah, we're budgeting for our core values. We're asking your consideration to approve allocating the 3 million of general fund surplus for the IT strategic plan, letting us increase our contribution for our facilities, for our major projects like the city hall, Marina Park, Sunset Ridge, yes?
Okay, so that's an interesting point. The levels are back to pre-annexation.
Yes.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, so we've added, what, 15,000 more residents, I think, since the last census? Since 2000 census, we've added 15,000.
Yeah.
Okay, so and our employee count is the same as before the 15,000, so our employee ratio per resident has actually gone down.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So 3.5 for the facilities. Again, this would be a net reduction of eight full-time positions. This includes some reclassifications to get us prepared for the direction the city is going, but overall, eight lower. And this would increase next year's general fund contribution for CIP for things like streets, roads, bridges, traffic signals by 1.6, getting us closer to our goal of 5 million a year from general fund. This is just a summary, again, we're planning 4.4 million of savings, we wanna allocate that strategically. The budget as proposed for 13 is not only balanced, it still has some finances available also for those key initiatives. So we're, we're closing with a surplus, we're balanced, we protected critical services, we've restructured and still eliminated eight positions net. We're providing for more facilities, streets, roads, and IT infrastructure. We're not using reserves. And we're asking for continued work in contracting out, and continued work on pensions. We're still working with our employee groups to get to those goals. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Dana.
Just to recap on a few things, looking ahead in 2013, 14, we have some initiatives underway on regional collaboration with Cities Costa Mesa, Huntington Beach, and even some discussions with Irvine, looking at ways where we can share costs between the cities. We continue to look at opportunities for using the private sector in arenas and areas where they can produce goods and services to the same quality as our existing staff were better, but at a less cost. And those, those opportunities are ongoing now. And then again, we look forward to better use of technology. We think the technology will allow us eventually, it may take us a few years to get there, to actually continue to streamline our business processes. We did, as part of Strategic Plan, map 32 business improvement processes, but all of those require some sort of upgrade to our technology to allow us to do that. And we think that will create a much more efficient organization ongoing.
And Dan was able to get me the returns. The calendar year 2010, PERS returns were 12.6, and 2011 was 1.1. And with that, we open it up to questions.
Questions for staff? Councilman Hinn?
Not necessarily a question, but a comment. Going back to the pension costs, if you take a look at that slide for, for next year, total pension costs, I think were around $25 million, and the employee contribution is around 6.3 million. That's just shy of a 25%, where of the total pension costs being contributed to our employee, by our employees, up from zero a few years ago. And so that's very substantial progress. It's substantial in relation to our overall goal. Our long-range goal is to reach a 50-50 sharing relationship on these costs. And so we've still got plenty of work to do, but that doesn't diminish the amount of progress that we have already made. And so I'm sure our constituents will be thankful for that. And the whole point of this is that it's one more factor that increases the ability for the city to invest in public assets, public value, for the long-range benefit of all of our residents. That's really what we're about here. And so I commend staff for another excellent, I realize this is the first stab at the budget, but it's a pretty darn good first stab. I'd make one other comment. Couple of years ago, we identified that we needed to take $15 million of structural cost out of our budget. We took 8 million out in the current fiscal year, actually, as it's looking, as it's looking now, more than that. And so we've made a very good start on that. While this budget that's proposed doesn't pick up all the rest of that goal, I think you saw on the last slide there, we've got other initiatives that we're working on that will give us a very good opportunity to move toward that overall goal we identified a year ago. And so I feel good about that too, recognizing there's still work to be done. We haven't let go of that goal a year ago. And, but I've got a lot of confidence that staff will be able to move us in the direction of achieving it. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tim Curry?
Well, I would echo Councilmember Hinn's comments, and of course, he was the author of the compensation philosophy that directs us to aim towards a 50-50 sharing of pension costs, and we are making good progress in getting there. And I would commend our employee groups, because these have been difficult negotiations, but our employees get it. And they have been good partners in working with the city in achieving these results, and in preserving the level of services that we enjoy here, and in doing so in a spirit of harmony that doesn't characterize every city. And I think the community should appreciate the contribution that they have made in achieving that. I think it's important to note that our, looking at these numbers, that our sales tax has recovered from its previous session levels, the property tax has recovered, never really went down in a significant way, except for the unsecured property tax. And our hotel tax is at an all-time record. So our revenues are up, our employment, our total workforce is down. It's, it's a phenomenal accomplishment, frankly, that we have 2001 employee levels with the city that we have and the services that we have. And yet, we're not only not getting complaints about services slipping, but we're getting awards from the Orange County Business Council for our new development services, and for the quality of services that we have. And I think all the staff needs to be commended for that, and we need to recognize the role that technology is playing with that, and that's why I think this technology investment is so important going forward, as we find ways to make the city more efficient and to provide service more effectively to the community. So I want to commend the city manager and the staff for bringing this budget forward. I think it's important to note that, once again, as it's been true throughout the recession, we are not using reserves to balance our budget. Our reserve levels are in fact being added to. And this year, we have the highest level of reserves at $94 million in the entire 106-year history of the city. And that's been true for the last several years.